I guess you go through the whole scenario.
If you really want to skip it, I'm OK with it.
I'll just touch on it. How about that?
Cliff notes version.
Tell Barbara to turn her phone to the silent position.
Yeah, I know. You can brag about your trip now, see? You make us all feel bad. Happy for you, though. I heard you extended it a bit. See, I'm keeping track of you.
But she still participated in the planning commission.
Yeah, I know.
From many miles away.
We're good? OK. All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the planning commission meeting, all of you in attendance. We would stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we can start. Amy's here. OK, so welcome to the planning commission meeting. We have a roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Maggie Munn.
Here.
Derek Montles. Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
And the proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on July 28, 2024, and August 8, 2024, over an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
All right, thank you. Do we have minutes to approve?
Nope.
OK. Then let's not approve them. OK. So since we have a limited class here today, we're going to have some abbreviated instructions. But welcome to the planning commission meeting. We are appointed by the Board of County Commissions. We meet twice monthly. And we serve as a local planning agency and hold public hearings to transmit to the Board of County Commissions our recommendations on a number of items. If anyone is in opposition to anything we discuss today, feel free to please contact the clerk and get the dates of the next county commission meeting, where it will be discussed. And be sure to attend that county commission meeting. For those of you who haven't attended a meeting like this before, we have three sections. We have continuances, we have consent, and we have regular items. We will go through continuances first, then consent items, and then regular items. If there's anything on consent that you'd like to have discussed today, whenever we read them off, please raise your hand, and we'll have a pull for discussion into the regular items. And anything that's on regular will be discussed fully today. So do we have anybody here that is here to talk about something not on today's agenda? If not, and I don't see anyone, is anyone online here discussing anything? Patrick? Nothing? OK. OK. And I don't believe there's anybody that's requested in writing an extended period to make their presentation. Is that right, Patrick?
Correct.
All right, so anybody that's here that's going to remain in the chamber during the meeting, please silence your phone. If you haven't done it already, I'll check mine, too. OK, and other than that, I think we're ready to start. So you have the floor.
All right, great. We will start with PC 1, which is a withdrawal. So this is an appeal withdrawal for Lowen Links Incorporated Appeal for the termination of October 8, 2021, that tree farm timber use and/or other agricultural activities are not principal permitted uses in the Beacon Woods MPUD DRI, nor in the R4 High Density Residential District, Northwest Pasco County, generally located on the north side of Hudson Avenue at Morningview Drive. And that comes to you with recommendation, recommended committee action of withdrawal from consideration. No further action is required.
All right, thank you very much. So that's withdrawn. PC 1 is withdrawn. Is anybody here for that one? OK, see no one?
OK, and I'm going to backstep here slightly. I don't know if I introduced myself. I think that's important. Yeah, gotcha. Patrick Dutter, Assistant Planning Services Director.
Thank you, Patrick.
OK, on to PC 2. PC 2 and PC 3 are related. So PC 2 is the zoning amendment. It's a continuance for 301 East MPUD, 301 East LLC rezoning request from RMH Residential Mobile Home District and C2 General Commercial Zoning District to MPD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the development of 200 townhomes and 36,000 square feet of commercial on approximately 29.01 acres located in the east market area. Recommended committee action is approve the continuance request to the 9524 Planning Commission in Dade City.
OK. And that's connected with the PC 3 as well.
PC 3, would you like me to read PC 3 now? PC 3 is the comprehensive plan amendment that supports the MPUD. So it's comprehensive plan amendment continuance, CPAS 2314, 301 East, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-5 and Sheet 23, changing from COM commercial to PD plan development on approximately 29.01 acres of real property located east of US 301 at the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection of US 301, which is Gall Boulevard, and Roanoke Riverway. And a text amendment creating subarea policy flew 7.1.77-301 East and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, adding subarea map 2-977-301 East. And this recommendation is also continuance to the September 5 LPA public hearing at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right. So do I have a motion on the voting continuances, please?
Move to continue PC 2 and PC 3 to the September 5 meeting?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor, so if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries.
Aye.
Okay.
Act of Portugal, huh?
The next two items are going to be read by Ms. Lauren Flynn with Planning Services.
OK, thank you.
Hello. How are you doing?
Hi.
Give us your name, for the record.
Lauren Flynn, Planner 2 with Planning, Development, and Economic. The new acronym again. So I have two amendments that I'm bringing to you guys today. They are companion amendments, and I wanted to give you guys both of them at the same time just because it gives you better background on what's happening. So the first one I'm going to start off with is the comprehensive plan amendment. It is PDE 240354 Rage Parcel, or CPAS 2409 Rage Parcel. There we go. So this amendment is going to be a flu change from RES 3 to RES 1. We're also going to be doing a couple of map changes to ensure comprehensive plan consistency. So we're going to be changing map 2-22 Urban Service Area, map 2-13 Rural Areas, map 2-18 South Market Area, and map 2-21 North Market Area. The intent of this amendment is to allow for the development of an MRS, a minor rural subdivision, to divide the 41-acre property into two different lots. And it's on Bellamy Brothers Road, north of the intersection with 52. So per the LDC, MRSSs are only allowed on the AG, AGR, and RES 1 flu classification. So in order for the property to do an MRS, it needed to change to RES 1. In order to do comprehensive plan consistency, we were removing it from the South Market Area and the Urban Service Area, and we're adding it to the Northeast Rural Area and the North Market Area, just to make sure everything's consistent within the comprehensive plan and the land development code, and we don't have any inconsistencies with visions for the area. Like I said at the beginning, there's a companion LDC amendment with this one to modify the Northeast Rural figures, 604.1, 604.2, and 604.4, to add that 41-acre parcel to the Northeast Rural Area. The subject property is currently in the South Market Area. And this is our aerial. It's 41 acres. Like I said, it's north of the intersection of State Route 52 and Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. Existing future land use is RES 3. Proposed is RES 1. This is the South Market Area map with the proposed removal of the 41-acre parcel. This is the addition to map 2-21, which is the North Market Area. And then we have the removal from the Urban Service Area. It's technically in the urban expansion area of the Urban Service Area. But we are planning to remove it from there. And we're adding it to Rural Area 1 or the Northeast Rural Area. So we find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies and closely aligns with the intent and the vision of the RES 1 flu and the policy flew 2.11 Northeast Rural Areas as it adds 41 rural acreage to the Northeast Rural Area. And we recommend that you find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's the first one.
So a quick question for you on this one, Lord. Certainly not opposed to it, but reading through the agenda memo, it's stating that we're going to make them bring utilities over 7,000 feet up to the property. Is that correct?
I did see that. I'm not sure if utilities took into consideration that is the Northeast Rural Area, because in the Northeast Rural, there isn't that requirement to... Or the vision of the Northeast Rural is to not have the central.
Actually, isn't there a comp plan policy that we won't extend utilities into the Northeast Rural Area?
I believe so, yeah. I believe it's that 2.11.
That's what I thought, because we're making them bring it all the way up from 52, I would guess, if that was the...
Right. I don't believe utilities took into consideration when they were looking at it. They probably just looked at the...
Probably want to correct that in the agenda memo.
Look at that, yeah.
I do have a related question to that, because I think if it had been AG, I'm not sure utilities would have made that comment. But what was the decision? Because I think they're only building two units, right?
Yeah, they're only building two...
What was the reasoning for going to RES 1 as opposed to AG or AGR?
I think the argument there was just that it was a lower jump. I don't think there was a... And probably maybe the lot sizes. But I know that even with AG or AGR, you would still be within that lot requirement, because I believe AGR is five-acre lots and AG is 10-acre lots.
I'm curious why the need... We're going to split this. It's a 41-acre parcel into two parcels.
Correct.
Why the need for an MRS subdivision?
Yeah, so they did not qualify for the one free split with the parent parcel. So the only... The easiest option was the MRS for them.
We might have missed one. So lots greater than or equal to 20 acres within RES 1 and RES 3, if you go to LDC 700.3, if you're making a 20-acre lot split in the RES 1 or RES 3 land use category, you're exempt from planning.
I was going by the recommendations given at the pre-app meeting from zoning and also from the tech team, and they all recommended the MRS for the client.
I'm not opposed to doing this or putting into the Northeast Rural, but this just seems like a long way to go. They were exempt, and we just... We went through this with something Mr. Gray and I worked on together earlier in the year. Same thing.
Patrick, anybody? Can you address that? Why they're doing an MRS as opposed to proceeding under an exemption?
Well, they don't need to. They're exempt. They can go split it. They can go record this at the property appraiser this afternoon without us doing anything.
Yeah, I'm just playing a little bit of... Just playing a little bit of catch-up on this one. Not quite sure. Yes, that exemption exists. I haven't specifically looked at this project, so I don't know if I can give you my answer right now.
Unless one of the law proceedings is going to be less than 20 acres.
Correct. That would be the one exception.
But we don't know. Do we know if that's the case?
The other question is, you said they didn't... This was the third parcel. What was the size of the previous split? Because a split of 40 acres in the RES 1 or RES 3 would have been exempt as well. These all would have been exempt splits.
Yeah, well, I mean, sure. I think there's a few code exemptions that you could have relied upon for that initial split. Usually, the one that is pursued is if your parent parcel, you get your one free split. That's what everyone hangs their hat on. Then outside of that, there are other exemptions that could apply, which I think what you pointed out.
What I'm getting at is in RES... Had they made a 40-acre split, they would have been exempt. So there's no counting that as a split against... Calling that a first split. It was an exempt split to begin with.
Sure.
And I've already had this discussion with Mr. Stein Snyder on another project.
OK, yeah. I, again, don't know too much about the project. But I think it's... You're raising very valid points and something we should potentially talk about.
Again, I don't have any objection to this or putting something in the Northeast Rural Area. Or just curiosity question, what's the application fee for a comp plan amendment? I mean, do you got to hire land use attorneys and pay application fees and...
For no reason.
For nothing. And delays time.
Well, I would also add that generally, we try to discourage the RES 1 flu because it's considered like a sprawl land use category. I mean, typically, we either want it to be urban-level development, RES 3 and higher, or rural, not... We generally discourage the proliferation of more RES 1.
Yeah, I think the main reason we did RES 1 was because of the surrounding RES 1 in the area. And the RES 1 also helped get into the Northeast Rural Area. So it is that more rural residential classification, but still technically residential. But I didn't know if our applicant was on. Were we able to get an answer?
I mean, if they say that they want to do something smaller than 20 acres, then...
Then agree.
Then it's probably the proper thing of what they had to do. Does anybody know?
Well, my personal opinion is we're here, and there's no need to hold them up. But if they want to not go forward to a county commission meeting and then rezoning or whatever else comes next after this...
Well, I mean, a minor rural subdivision is still a subdivision. I mean, there's still... And Patrick can probably explain. I mean, it's not like it's no work to go through minor rural subdivision.
I agree. To do an MRS, they have to submit a preliminary development plan to development and review. So there's even more cost, and you're going to hire an engineer to do that, and...
OK, yeah.
Is the applicant on?
Yeah, so Len Johnson is one of the attorneys with the applicant. So I was just going to ask them if with this MRS, were you guys planning on doing a lot sizes that were less than 21 acres? Or 20 acres, I believe?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, yes, this is Len Johnson, Johnson Pope Law Firm, 400 North Ashley, in Suite 3100 in Tampa.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I need to swear you first before we give you testimony. So if you could be sworn, please?
Yes, sir.
I trust you're raising your right hand, so...
I am.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to the truth, so help you God?
I certainly do, yes.
There we go, there we go.
If you look back at the history of this, you know, I kind of feel like at this point, we've been banging our head. We thought there had to be a simpler way to do this. The answer to your first question is there was no intention of doing anything but splitting into two lots. One already exists. There's one house already there. The whole purpose behind this was to allow our client's son and his family to build another house on this 41 acres. We had the approach initially. I thought this would be a parent tract, and we really wouldn't have to do anything. We had multiple meetings and correspondence back and forth with staff, and we're assured that that wasn't workable, that the... There had been a prior split of a parcel to the south and that we could not otherwise split it without going through this process. And that's why we're here. And if we can, then we'd just be delighted to do that.
Well, can you answer the question of what your lot sizes will be?
There's no intention to do anything but two lots of 20-plus acres.
OK. And I would actually say that that's actually a moot point, because if this last split was 40 acres, it was an exempt split. It didn't count. So this would still be a split of a parent... This would still be a parent parcel, which he can split one time anyway.
All right.
And I'll tell you, we were advised otherwise by staff along the way.
Putting aside that issue, because apparently that has... That discussion has occurred, and apparently somebody determined it didn't qualify as a parent parcel. But I guess I'd like to hear the answer from anybody who explained why they didn't proceed under the 20-acre exemption.
I don't think...
Pretty clear. Mr. Moody makes very good points. Says lots greater than or equal to 20 acres within the RES 1 and RES 3 flu are exempt. The applicant's saying they're doing lots that are greater... Equal to or greater than 20 acres.
Yeah, I mean, there's a very good chance that maybe we didn't catch that in the review, which is possible. And I'm sure we could take a closer look at that after this meeting to see if that is an exemption that can absolutely take advantage of. Maybe there's something we're not thinking of. Assuming that is confirmed, then I would think that this probably isn't needed.
Can we recommend this for approval and have them check it? So that...
Well, yeah. I mean, if we approve it, there's no harm, no foul for us. It's only that they've had to... The poor owners had to hire Mr. Johnson here and pay the fees and suffer the delay. And I guess what I would say to staff, because Mr. Gray and I have already had this discussion, please speak with County Attorney Stein Snyder, who's an expert here in the plating laws or plating rules in our county. And he can explain this to you when things are exempt and what still qualifies as a parent parcel, because we've seen this now happen on more than one occasion.
Well, you know, I think these are mistakes that can happen. I mean, nobody's perfect. But I do think there's a... There are some things we should think about in terms of what to do here. If we approve it, they're going to have to go forward to the to the county commission and go through the process, right?
They don't have to. They can withdraw it, can't they?
They can withdraw it, but they also have paid a fee.
Yes.
Well, I will say that even if it does get changed to RES 1 and gets added to Northeast Rural, that exemption still applies even if it's RES 1.
Yes.
So I'm not sure that they're any worse off. I mean, other than they downplaying the property, but it would be...
Well, right, but...
Presumably, they want to be okay with that.
They would be... If we went forward with the procedure on the table, they're giving up a future land use entitlement that they may or may not want to or may regret giving up sometime in the future. I'm sure the people in the Northeast Rural Pasco area would be happier that we're putting land back in.
Right.
I mean, that's clearly... That's a decision that they'll have to make with their counsel. I mean, that's clearly, that's a decision that they'll have to make with their counsel.
Yeah, I mean, they could always withdraw the application. My only point is that the exemption you point out would apply, also apply if it was res one.
Yes.
So from a plating standpoint, I'm not sure they're any worse off if it gets changed to res one. I get your point that they may be losing overall density, but it.
Again, that's something they can work out privately with counsel. And I'm not saying that, you know, listen, mistakes happen, I understand, I agree with Mr. Gray, but I just, we need to remember that these proceedings are costly. They're time consuming and they're costly. And so we just hate to see someone, you know, throw money, throw good money after bad, as they say.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'd just like to, you know, I think we need to show some consideration as a county for if we do make a mistake and we can make consideration, is at least, at least refund their application fee.
Is that possible, David?
It is, but that's not a call I can make, that's something.
I understand.
Patrick may have that authority now, I don't know with his new position.
I don't know what authority I have. So we're reading through the exemptions piece of the code right now, just trying to wrap our heads around a little bit. Amy points out that the code section that we're relying on right now, the introduction to that is divisions of agriculturally or residentially zoned parent parcels into, but this parcel has already had its split, therefore is not a parent parcel.
I understand that, but in their future land use category, this parcel is 41 acres. So it would have been a split greater than 20 acres. Therefore, it was, that split was an exempt split as well.
But that parcel that was split, I think was 10 acres.
Yeah, it's just that 10 acre piece.
If it was a 10 acre split, I would agree with you, it's not exempt. But right now, I thought this entire parcel was 40 acres.
41 acres.
I think they're saying originally.
I see, so you're saying that this was originally a 50 acre parcel and 10 was split off.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking here.
Then I would agree with you about that.
So they do, they do have a lot that was split to something less than 20.
So again, I wish I had the reading book so I could see it. But I believe it was that 50 acres, they split off that 10 that Patty has highlighted there, which basically made them not a parent parcel anymore. And then if you're trying to retroactively apply this parent parcel, I don't think you can, this split.
I think that's the key fact.
Sure.
All right, then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion approved.
Voting on one or two, all of them are.
We're just voting on PC four, right?
Yes. Well, they're tied together.
Well, one's on consent and the other one, is the other one on consent, too?
No, it's an LDC amendment.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Motion approved, PC four.
Second.
Okay. And like sign, or in the negative, anyone?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Now, the next one, PC five.
PC five is the LDC companion amendment to this where we are modifying the rural area boundaries. So 6041, 6042 and 6044 to add the 41 acres to the northeast rural area. The proposed amendment was presented to the Horizontal Roundtable on July 17th, 2024. This is the existing figure. The proposed with the 41 acre parcel right at the bottom corner there. Same with this one, existing 6042. Proposed with the little parcel there. Existing and proposed. And we, the recommendation is to find the ordinance consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan.
All right. Anybody else here to comment on this? No. Okay, any questions from up here? All right, motion?
So moved. Move approval of PC five?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both like sign. Okay, that's it. All right. Patrick? See how things get done much quicker when you're here.
Shortest meeting ever under.
Are there like a closing ceremonies that we do?
We didn't want to, we didn't want to award you with a medal for, you know, your.
All right.
So anyway, anything else you need to bring up?
I don't think so.
Amy, anything, anybody, nothing? All right, unless here, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm not even going to ask for the other one.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Hey Tampa Bay, let's come together to conserve water. When it rains or rain is in the forecast, skip a week of watering and save up to 2,500 gallons of water. Once a week, watering restrictions are in effect. Know your day Tampa Bay, go to mywaterday.org.
So I'm hanging out in our medical department today, and we are actually preparing to do some routine surgeries, both for our kittens that are actually moving on to their forever homes. But another thing that we also do while we're here in our medical department is we do also work with several injured pets as well. We have one kitty that's here right now. She actually came in with a partially fractured jaw, and she's actually very, very happy and very sweet. But while she's with us, we'll make sure she gets some really good pain medication, getting taken care of. And then when she's ready and feeling good, we'll make sure she finds her forever home. We also have several kitties that are under medical foster right now. We are actually watching from day to day. She has a little bit of a eye thing going on here, but we're watching her. She's in medical foster right now. And as we go from day to day, medical will decide if she does need to have her eye either removed or if there is more medical treatment that can be offered for her. So we're hanging out in our treatment area, and this is where our animals are anesthetized and then go ahead and.